Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the April twenty second, twenty twenty five meeting of the Town Board of the Town of Newcastle. The board has been in executive session. I'd like to ask for motion to open the work session and just just the work session for now.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh sorry for the delay everyone. We have the we have a relit- a very quick work session prior to our town board meeting. And we just have some administrative items to go through. So Rob, um take it away.
Alright, uh we have retroactive payment and claims, two of them. One dated April fourth, one the fourteenth. Uh we have the adoption of the monthly reports from March. Uh we have the adoption of meeting minutes from March. Uh we have the authorization to declare surplus and accept au- auction results. Jeremy, that was twelve hundred dollars for a pickup truck. Got the number for you this time. Uh going back to two thousand and fourteen, three hundred and nine thousand dollars worth of surplus equipment we've sold. Jeremy likes to track that. Uh we have the authorization to sign and submit a document for New York State DOT culvert replacement. That's gonna be on one seventeen, uh right around Old House. The board previously approved that uh with Jill as the town administrator. And unfortunately she isn't that anymore. And uh they won't accept the document with her name on it. They need my name on it, so it's um we're asking the board to reauthorize that.
Okay.
Um we are looking for authorization to accept the CCSD bid for solid waste services. Those are for town owned buildings. And uh the commercial refuse district, we partner with the school district on that bid uh we have for many years. Uh we have the uh three related uh the next three, the related. The first is the authorization to join the National Purchasing Partners uh government group. Uh that is a purchasing cooperative that allows the town to take advantage and piggyback on their bid. Uh the bid that we're taking advantage of is the authorization to purchase a twenty twenty five Western Star forty seven X class eight all season plow and dump truck. And uh we're looking for authorization to establish a capital project. That's a costly costly item. Uh we're looking for authorization to use town property for the Into the Light uh March. That is on June eighth. Uh we're looking for authorization to use town property for the Girl Scouts. They had seven dates listed to sell cookies at the train station. Uh we have the authorization to issue the RFQ for chapline. So we're now about to identify a design consultant for the chapline. Uh there are fifteen uh pre-selected consultants that we're gonna issue the RFQ and they can respond to that if they're interested in our project. We have an authorization to approve uh C VAC service credits. So the board will remember a little over a year ago. Uh we approved adopting the uh low staff program for C VAC. That is a kind of a pension system for volunteer ambulance workers. Um we that was enacted beginning in January of twenty twenty four. So now we are adopting the service credits that C VAC provides to us. It's a step in the process because the town is the sponsor of the program. So this uh first step was uh that C VAC submitted this to us. The town board needs to approve it. We give it back to C VAC. They wait to see if there are any appeals from their members. And then we go ahead and submit it to Penn Flex, which is the administrator of the program. Uh we have a resolution for two tax refunds, uh Ethical Society of Northern Westchester and the Estancia de Pina. Uh the board has heard about those before. And uh we have an Arbor Day proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Um anyone have any questions about any of these items? Nope, okay. Uh so I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now welcome to our town board meeting. I want to say Happy Earth Day to everyone. Um today is April twenty second, Earth Day twenty twenty five. And the theme of Earth Day is Our Power, Our Planet. Which is about uniting uh around renewable energy. And we have a very timely presentation that you will hear later shortly. Um regarding the S- um Sustainable Westchester Solarize Residential Solarize Program. So it's a very timely presentation considering that it's Earth Day um and specifically about renewable energy. And uh like Rob said, uh we are going to have an Arbor Day resolution. Arbor Day is uh Friday, April twenty fifth. Um in support of uh protection and planting art of trees. It was first observed in eighteen seventy two with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And uh twenty twenty five is the hundred and fifty third anniversary of National Arbor Day. So happy Arbor Day in advance for Friday. Um and with that, I will ask Rob if you have any other announcements.
Uh no announcements.
Okay. And I will hold my supervisor's report for the town newsletter. And Rob, do you have um an administrator's report?
Yeah, I do. I just have a a couple items of note in the administrator's report. Uh I'll point out Christina's not with us tonight. But uh we are uh ongoing tax collection for the town and county collection. Uh the last day to make those payments is, I think it's Wednesday, April thirtieth. Uh we will remain open until seven P M. that night, Lauren. Okay, um so you can pay online. You can bring a check in. Um we'll accept that up until uh seven P M. on Wednesday evening, the thirtieth. Um
And is that going to be on the um electronic board?
It's on the electronic board. We're gonna s- we've already sent out an E alert. We'll send out another E alert.
Yes.
Um yep, we'll make everybody aware. Um I had mentioned this in the newsletter last time. We have begun the road closure up on Shether Road. Uh that's expected to be closed for approximately two months, give or take. Uh that was uh those repairs were needed as a direct result of, I think it was either one of the high storms, Isaias or Aida, one of those. Uh and uh that project is being covered from a FEMA grant. Um and the last thing I have to point out is that our contractor, GPRS, they're in town. Uh I think they started yesterday and they'll be in town for the next couple of weeks. This is uh our leak detection. So uh they're usually in town later at night when there's less water being used. They're listening in on our pipes to see if they can detect any leaks. We've used this company for years, so you may see either a black van or a white van in your neighborhood. It will be well marked with their logo, GPRS. Uh so look out for those.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um so today I would like to welcome Leo Wegman from um Sustainable Westchester. He is their Director of Solar Programs. And we also have Kent Thomas here, who's co-chair of the Town of Newcastle Sustainability Advisory Board. Um we're going to have a presentation on Sustainable Westchester's Residential Solarize twenty twenty five campaign. So welcome. Thank you for being here with us today.
Uh thank you very much Supervisor Tip and and the rest of the board. Uh and I'll I I have all of this in a slide form that I gave to Lauren to distribute to all of you, but you already have a series of documents from us. Including residential solarize. And I'll just give a quick oral presentation if I may.
Yes.
I'll s- I'll start it by saying that in Newcastle, there was a previous Solarize campaign in twenty sixteen that saw installation of forty solar systems at that time under a prior version of this program. And that was a peak at that time. And since then, after the pandemic last year, for example, twenty twenty four, there were there were fifty solar system, fifty two solar systems installed in our residential homes. So the numbers have been steadily going up. So that's good news. But the previous um volume of solar really peaked under a Solarize program in twenty sixteen. Um sort of goose the process for everyone, if I could say it that way. So currently in in Newcastle, there are three hundred and twenty eight residential solar installations on homes, on occupied homes. And there are eight commercial solar systems installed. The total investment behind these systems, that is the gross investment, was twenty six million dollars. Of which about ten million dollars would have been spent on local labor force. Of the install crews or the sales and ad- and all of the pack office work that is involved in installing that's that many systems. Those systems at the time have garnered seven point five million dollars worth of state incentive, which lower that initial investment from twenty six to nineteen million. The total amount of solar energy generated is over ten megawatts of solar. So when you translate that into kilowatt hours, that's twelve and a half million kilowatt hours a year being generated within the town of Newcastle for the folks whose solar systems are behind their meters. And those homeowners are now avoiding, in this year with climate rates rising to roughly thirty two cents a kilowatt hour, are now saving or avoiding paying climate and over four million dollars annually. So there's a tremendous, those are dollars that are staying locally in people's pockets or are going to pay off the loan for the solar system. And the average investment tax credit available from the federal government today for a solar system is about ten thousand dollars. Of the total investment of about thirty thousand dollars. And the average building department fee from a solar system in Newcastle currently is a little over five hundred dollars to process. So there's town revenue involved as well as services. And the town does have and has adopted, as you all know, the the solar specific permit, which is a sort of two page checklist that makes it easier for homeowners and their firms that they contract with to file an application. It sort of reduces the amount of paperwork that the town building inspector needs to go through in um screening for the applications. We're doing this partly because we want to be cognizant of the New York State Climate Goals, which are now embedded in law and now being funded through the Environmental Bond Act. And for Westchester County to do its part of the state goal of getting to seventy percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, which is now only four and a half or four and three quarters years away, we need to increase in Westchester County by three hundred percent the number of residential solar systems. We also need to increase the commercial
To reauthorize that.
Okay.
Um, we are looking for authorization to accept the CCSD bid for solid waste services. Those are for town owned buildings and uh the commercial refuse district. We partner with the school district on that bid uh we have for many years. Uh, we have the uh three related uh. The next three, the related, the first is the authorization to join the National Purchasing Partners uh government group. Uh, that is a purchasing cooperative that allows the town to take advantage and piggyback on their bid. Uh, the bid that we're taking advantage of is the authorization to purchase a twenty twenty five Western Star forty seven X class eight all season plow and dump truck. And uh we're looking for authorization to establish a capital project. That's a costly costly item. Uh, we're looking for authorization to use town property for the into the light uh march. That is on June eighth. Uh, we're looking for authorization to use town property for the Girl Scouts. They had seven dates listed to sell cookies at the train station. Uh, we have the authorization to issue the RFQ for chapline. So we're now about to identify a design consultant for the chapline. Uh, there are fifteen uh pre-selected consultants that we're going to issue the RFQ and they can respond to that if they're interested in our project. We have an authorization to approve uh C VAC service credits. So the board will remember a little over a year ago, uh, we approved adopting the uh low staff program for C VAC. That is a kind of a pension system for volunteer ambulance workers. Um, we, that was enacted beginning in January of twenty twenty four. So now we are adopting the service credits that C VAC provides to us. It's a step in the process because the town is the sponsor of the program. So this uh first step was uh that C VAC submitted this to us. The town board needs to approve it. We give it back to C VAC. They wait to see if there are any appeals from their members and then we go ahead and submit it to Penflex, which is the administrator of the program. Uh, we have a resolution for two tax refunds, uh Ethical Society of Northern Westchester and the Estancia de Pina. Uh, the board has heard about those before and uh we have an Arbor Day proclamation.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um, anyone have any questions about any of these items? Nope? Okay. Uh, so I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn the work session and open the town board meeting.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now welcome to our town board meeting. I want to say happy Earth Day to everyone. Um, today is April twenty second, Earth Day twenty twenty five. And the theme of Earth Day is our power, our planet, which is about uniting uh around renewable energy. And we have a very timely presentation that you will hear later uh shortly um regarding the sustainable Westchester's solar residential solarize program. So it's a very timely presentation considering that it's Earth Day um and specifically about renewable energy. And uh like Rob said, uh, we are going to have an Arbor Day resolution. Arbor Day is uh Friday, April twenty fifth um in support of uh protection and planting art of trees. It was first observed in eighteen seventy two with the planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And uh twenty twenty five is the hundred and fifty third anniversary of National Arbor Day. So happy Arbor Day in advance for Friday. Um, and with that, I will ask Rob if you have any other announcements.
Uh, no announcements.
Okay, and I will hold my supervisor's report for the town newsletter. And Rob, do you have um an administrator's report?
Yeah, I do. I just have a a couple items of note in the administrator's report. Uh, I'll point out Christina's not with us tonight, but uh we are uh ongoing tax collection for the town and county collection. Uh, the last day to make those payments is, I think it's Wednesday, April thirtieth. Uh, we will remain open until seven P M. that night, Lauren.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, so you can pay online, you can bring a check in. Um, we'll accept that up until uh seven P M. on Wednesday evening, the thirtieth. Um.
And is that going to be on the um electronic board?
It's on the electronic board. We're gonna, we've already sent out an E alert. We'll send out another E alert.
Still there? Okay. Yes.
Um. Yep, we'll make everybody aware. Um, I had mentioned this in the newsletter last time, we have begun the road closure up on Shether Road. Uh, that's expected to be closed for approximately two months, give or take. Uh, that was, uh, those repairs were needed as a direct result of, I think it was either one of the high storms, Isaias or Aida, one of those. Uh, and uh that project is being covered from a FEMA grant. Um, and the last thing I have to point out is that our uh contractor, GPRS, they're in town. Uh, I think they started yesterday and they'll be in town for the next couple of weeks. This is uh our leak detection, so uh they're usually in town later at night when there's less water being used. They're listening in on our pipes to see if they can detect any leaks. We've used this company for years, so you may see either a black van or a white van in your neighborhood. It will be well marked with their logo, GPRS, uh, so look out for those.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Um, so today I would like to welcome Leo Wegman from um Sustainable Westchester. He is their Director of Solar Programs. And we also have um Kent Thomas here, who's co-chair of the Town of Newcastle Sustainability Advisory Board. Um, we're going to have a presentation on Sustainable Westchester's Residential Solarize twenty twenty five campaign. So welcome. Thank you for being here with us today.
Uh, thank you very much Supervisor Tip and and the rest of the board. Uh, and I'll, I I have all of this in a slide form that I gave to Lauren to distribute to all of you, but you already have a series of documents from us, including the residential solar residential solarize. And I'll just give a quick oral presentation if I may.
Yes.
I'll s- I'll start it by saying that in Newcastle, there was a previous solarize campaign in twenty sixteen that saw installation of forty solar systems at that time under a prior version of this program. And that was a peak at that time. And since then, after the pandemic last year, for example, twenty twenty four, there were, there were fifty solar system, fifty two solar systems installed in our residential homes. So the number's been steadily going up. So that's good news, but the previous um volume of solar really peaked under a solarize program in twenty sixteen. Um, sort of goose the process for everyone, if I, if I can say it that way. So currently in in Newcastle, there are uh three hundred and twenty eight residential solar installations on homes, on occupied homes. And there are eight commercial solar systems installed. The total investment behind these systems, that is, the gross investment was twenty six million dollars, of which about ten million dollars would have been spent on local labor force. Of the install crews or the sales and adams and all of the pack office work that is involved in installing that's that many systems. Those systems at the time have garnered seven point five million dollars worth of state incentive, which lowered that initial investment from twenty six to nineteen million. The total amount of solar energy generated is over ten megawatts of solar. So when you translate that into kilowatt hours, that's twelve and a half million kilowatt hours a year being generated within the town of Newcastle for the folks whose solar systems are behind their meters. And those homeowners are now avoiding, in this year with climate desin rates rising to roughly thirty two cents a kilowatt hour, are now saving or avoiding paying climate desin over four million dollars annually. So there's a tremendous, those are dollars that are staying locally in people's pockets or are going to pay off the loan for the solar. And the average investment tax credit available from the federal government today for a solar system is about ten thousand dollars. Of the total investment of about thirty thousand dollars. And the average building department fee from a solar system in Newcastle currently is a little over five hundred dollars to process. So there's town revenue involved as well as services. And the town does have and has adopted, as you all know, the the solar specific permit, which is a sort of two-page checklist that makes it easier for homeowners and their firms that they contract with to file an application. It sort of reduces the amount of paperwork that the town building inspector needs to go through and um screening for the applications. We're doing this partly because we want to be cognizant of the New York State climate goals, which are now embedded in law and now being funded through the Environmental Bond Act. And for Westchester County to do its part of the state goal of getting to seventy percent renewable energy by twenty thirty, which is now only four and a half or four and three quarters years away, we need to increase in Westchester County by three hundred percent the number of residential solar systems. We also need to increase the commercial systems by trying to focusing on what residential homeowners can do. And if we increase by three hundred percent the number of residential homeowners with solar on their home roofs, that number countywide will go from roughly fourteen thousand to somewhere between forty, forty five thousand systems. So that's a lot of systems, but there's many hundreds, there's many, many more households than that. So we're uh to 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 put it in perspective, um, we're electrifying our grid faster than we're adding renewable energies for the grid. And that's evident if you count and look at the state data for how many electric vehicles are sold in Westchester. That's increasing at forty five percent per year. It started at a very low base, but it's ramping up very quickly. If you look at the number of solar systems that are increasing, it's increasing about twenty percent a year. So if, unless you want to export the electricity, putting your E V or import it from some other distant place, then you need, we need to increase the the solar as well as we electrify the transportation system. I'm just skipping ahead. Um, on uh the goal, so the goal for our residential solarize program is to triple the number of solar systems in Westchester County in the next, by twenty thirty. So we're already in twenty twenty five, so now uh we think that's possible. There were nineteen thousand systems installed last year, so we want that number to go to three thousand this year. And then five thousand the next year and so on. This is gonna be a sort of update. And I'll start by saying that we began outreach to six hundred municipal officials and volunteers in the forty two municipalities that participated in our programs. And I'm sure so many of you probably got emails from us about this. Um, that's already generated quite a number of responses from municipalities that want to be able to be part of this. Um, and municipalities can participate in our residential solarize program by simply promoting this to their constituents in whatever way they would normally do that. Whether you have uh Instagram account or you have an email newsletter that goes out. We can provide you with template content for that if you can adapt and choose directly as is. The second thing is we're asking municipalities to explain to us how they may streamline the permitting for solar, the average typical residential solar system. In your case, that's already a checkmark for you. You've already done that with your s- with your solar, even if you have your solar streamlined permit. Um, and uh the, that's sort of the end of the obligations for the municipalities, just sort of push this out there throughout the rest of this county year. What we will be doing is we will be giving you a quarterly report on the number of inquiries we received from your zip code uh and what the resolution of those inquiries were. Um, in the pre-prior four solarize programs that were run twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, we had three thousand six hundred inquiries to sustain Westchester from all the community campaigns included in one year. I think there were about six hundred inquiries from the Newcastle. And that generated six hundred solar systems. We think the ratio is going to be much higher this time. Because what we're doing this time is when someone comes to us, rather than simply pass you on to a solar installer, we are going to be doing our own solar assessment of that house remotely, but then on the phone with the homeowner. And that's because at this point, I'm a certified national solar installation professional. So I sort of brought my credentials to sustain Westchester to be able to provide that. I previously ran a company for ten years and did this work and installed solar all over New York State, actually. So um we have the benefit of having in-house expertise to give people advice on whether they can go solar or what kind of questions they might ask. So we're sort of pre-educating the consumer on this. So that when we then refer them to the three vetted solar installers, they'll already have some idea of what the questions will be that they'll be asking and what information the solar installers will want. On the flip side, we also went to the solar installer committee and looked at which installers had achieved a quality rating with the New York State Quality Assurance Program behind the solar program, which is a fairly rigorous set of criteria and involves spot checks on solar systems. They could have photo documents and documents. So we went, we did that, but we also went through and I looked at seven or eight other criteria that were on my checklist. How active was the company in the last two years? Have they done at least a minimum number of systems so they know, I know they can keep a crew busy so that they can respond adequately to to uh to uh homeowners? Um, had they worked in at least twenty jurisdictions in Westchester? If we have forty three jurisdictions and you've only worked in one, it doesn't do me any good to send you customers who are in, you know, some are are entirely different jurisdictions where you're not familiar with the building permit process in that jurisdiction. So how familiar are, were, how, was that company with at least twenty of our our forty three jurisdictions? So they have some broad awareness and experience. And also important was uh the quality of their work. I had them submit all photographs to me for projects and I certainly had given a good grade so I wanted to go through the photo documentation for that project to see exactly the quality of their craftsmanship on site. And that was important to 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 be able to to judge how how the work would look to the homeowner when when the company was done. Um, whether they prepared an owner's manual for the homeowner, so the homeowner would have, you know, a document with all the relevant information in it. So then as it as a, just a basic form of physical protection. Whether they offered financing and we emphasized ownership or finance to own over solar leasing or over solar power purchase agreements. So I, I sort of, basically we had three companies who do ninety percent of the business, who financing to own. And that was the goal was to have homeowners own the systems that are being lag bolted to their roofs. Um, and the final thing is I also took the New York Sun program data for the past twenty four months for these companies across all companies active in Westchester County and looked at the price points. What were their dollars per watt for the systems before the incentives? I drew a line down the middle of the average and I only chose comp- chose companies that met all my other quality uh uh credentials that were below average in their average price in the last twelve months for those, for the typical systems. So I think price point we've gotten from companies that are active, that are responsive, uh, and that have high quality installs at a, at a, at a, at a fair and below average cost. And so that's um, in a nutshell, what the, what the vetting process is being. What we've done on our website is set up a page, residential solarize page with a button on it that says, you know, register your interest here. So the homeowner will simply go to that page, click that button, and it'll just be a little short form that says tell us your name, your address, your email and your phone number. And we will respond to you quickly and we'll look at your home and tell you and engage with you in a brief conversation as to whether you, whether your roof is good for solar or, you know, whatever it might might be, maybe you want to put a carport or something. We'll talk to you about that. And we'll ask you what your bill is, what's your typical monthly bill is, your annual bill to estimate so we don't project a much bigger solar system than you need. Um, and then once we give you that information, we'll say that, you know, the, the condition of your roof will be, will be uh important to understand and what your electric service panel look like. We'll take those few pieces of information, talk to the homeowner why they think they want to go solar. And then answer any questions they may have. And if they're still interested and excited about it, then we'll refer them simultaneously to the three installer partners. And then we'll also make, well, we'll write, enter a few emails so they're introduced to each other individually. And then we'll follow up two weeks later to ask if they had any questions or they had heard back, what's their experience. And we'll follow up two weeks after that and so on for the rest of the year with these folks. Uh, so we're trying to be a, the sort of your solar ombudsman for your residents that come to us and stay in touch with them throughout the process um and uh answer their questions along the way. And probably just look at my notes here. And Kent's been very helpful to us in all kinds of things, so if I have any questions about Newcastle, just call Kent.
No, I, I asked him a ton of questions.
Oh, yeah, we know.
Or he's calling me all the time, so that's fine. And we, we, we work all the time too. And every municipality that we're active in has, has, has their own Kent Thomas, so.
That's not true. I don't believe that.
One second, one Kent Thomas.
While you're looking, I have a question for you.
Absolutely.
If you have, uh, you're gonna have someone look at the roof to to ensure the stability of the roof to basically hold the solar and then, for example, if you, you, what roof says what thirty years on average or should be thirty years? If you're twenty six years into a roof, you can still put the solar on and replace the shingles in five, six, seven years?
So.
So these are questions that I just.
Right, so the condition of the roof is important. If, and 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 ninety percent of the systems will be, will be our roof, existing roof. Um, and so ninety five percent. Uh, and so the condition of the roof will matter. Uh, if the roof is old, it will be replaced anyway. Uh, many so.
If that roof, we're talking sh- shingles, the, the.
Yeah, this, what that, the shingles, the asphalt shingles, yeah. So many, oh, every company that we're, that we're working with now basically is connected with, they're either a certified roofing company or they have a partner that's a certified roofer. And when I'm in my own firm of, uh, on my own house, I need a new roof, so I put the roof on on Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday I handle for the solar system on. I do it all as one process. So so for roofs that at the end of their life, that's a frequent solution is to just bundle it all together. Um, and uh the uh whether, i- if you have a roof uh that has particular concerns, let's say you have a large modern house with a flat roof and you don't want to be penetrating that with lag bolts. So that's not handled with a penetrating method and there are, there are many different ways to treat roofs. Sometimes roofs just need a little bit of repair and are otherwise good and that typically be handled. We won't be going on roofs necessarily. I mean, if someone asks me to go on the roof, I'm happy to do it, but but to them speaking, that would be a discussion between the, their installer partner and and the homeowner. But almost always, uh, the, the condition of the roof is is sort of one of the first concerns. Westchester County G I S has actually, the planning department has pretty recent flyovers. It's much better than Google Earth. So I go to the West County G I S to assess their roof and I'll tell the homeowner, I think you may have issues with this or that, a C I I. Um, and the, the second thing that comes up quite often is whether the, what the electric service panel looks like. You know, if they have a, an old electric service panel, it may need to be upgraded or or could be bypassed these days with a particular piece of additional technology. So it's uh, those are just standard questions that would come up.
I really appreciate the efforts that you went into to vet the installers. I think you included a lot of helpful information and people who are interested in this should feel comfortable knowing that the people you're recommending know what they're doing. They come highly regarded, hardly, highly rated and we'll give them.
Yeah, and 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 we're, and we're, 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 we're here throughout the process because we're in the committee anyway. So uh I just want to emphasize that whatever questions someone has, after we make a referral, we're, we're still just one phone call away.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I, I really appreciate the comprehensiveness of what you're offering because uh I've heard from a lot of people that they want to do this, but they don't know where to turn. They don't have the proper installers and it's really a, a bit daunting when you're starting from scratch. So I really appreciate the service of evaluating a home. You provide cost benefit analysis, you give referrals, and then you do a follow-through with, with the homeowners. So I think it's, it's a very comprehensive program from an organization that, that we trust and that, that has worked with all the municipalities in Westchester. So this is very much appreciated. Um, I do have a question. Um, what is the life in general, the life of these solar panels? And um what's your opinion on rapidly changing technology? In the sense that someone may commit to a certain system, may find later on that there's something else that's available that they might prefer? And how, how does that?
Yes.
I'll piggyback that question.
Do they get locked? Do they get locked in?
I'll piggyback that question. I'm curious how, how the technology has changed since, you said it last was two thousand seventeen or eighteen.
Yeah.
Right, so uh there is obviously a continual sort of evolution in the technology, but it is a fairly mature technology too from, from the perspective of the basic physics. There are now some marginal gains being made in the power electronics and the, the thinness of the conductors in the glass inside the solar panel where you have a, you know, a quarter of a percent gain once in a while. So, but the solar cells and and modules these days are a few percentage points more efficient than ten years ago, but it's not an earth-shattering difference necessarily. And the price that you're paying now for that is actually lower than what you were paying ten years ago. So the value is, is there, um, the, so there is incremental improvement um in the performance or in the, in the uh uh um uh quality uh of the modules. But these days, we chose these standards as well because they tend to work with what I, with what Bloomberg Business considers tier one solar manufacturers that are very large companies that can stand behind their, their manufacturer's warranties. And these, these days, the solar panels come with a twenty year, what they call limited performance warranty where there's less, where the solar panels warranty to lose, to degrade less than one half of one percent per year. So at the end of your twenty, you're still, uh, uh, you're, you're guaranteed to be at eighty percent of where you were in year one. So that's sort of a general thing. There are some pieces of power electronics that can, that have a shorter lifespan, like the inverter may have a ten year lifespan. But when we were replacing inverters a couple of years ago, for people who bought solar ten years ago, we were replacing something that was the size of the refrigerator in your house with something that's the size of your small desktop. Cause it then got miniaturized. It was half the price of the original thing from ten years ago. So that probably will continue to sort of happen. Um, but the, so you could say if I wait, something will be more efficient five years from now. But in the meantime, I'm paying thirty two, thirty eight, forty, forty three, forty eight cents per kilowatt hour that I would have missed out on.
Right, okay.
So that's the reason not to wait.
I'm signing up.
What?
I'm signing up.
Sure.
Same here.
So your memo, your memo said that you, you selected four initial municipalities and that we are among the four.
So the, did, did my memo, did?
Is that still the case?
I'm losing track of the head inquiries from, from Newcastle and at least three others like within the first twenty four hours.
Okay, I see. Uh, Hastings, Croton, Cortland and Newcastle.
That's correct.
And so are you simply looking for us to say that, you know, we would like you to, to be available for?
If, if you're interested, yeah, we're, we're, we're happy to. We're putting together some pieces of sort of, I'll call it marketing collateral, like text for email or Instagram image
Mm-hmm.
that we can, if you'd like us to give that to you, tell, tell me or tell us to whom we should send that here at the town to be distributed or I'll just skip it all to Kent when he's ready now.
You can send it to our town, town administrator.
Tom, sure, Rob, yeah, I'm Mister.
Or he can tell you.
I'd be happy to do that. Uh.
I feel, I feel very comfortable recommending this program to the community.
Absolutely.
Agreed.
Be happy to.
Right, and uh was already asked by Mister Thomas whether we have flyers for Earth Day. I know we're working on it. We, we get invited to like thirty seven Earth Day events, so that our whole staff is like divided and conquer. But we do have information that we'll make available. Unlike last time when we printed up, we had fifteen different solarize campaigns, including, I think Newcastle teamed up with Somers? No, it's with.
With Somers.
With Somers, so we had that, you know, that piece of collateral and that long time with that demo and and and. But this time we're, we're not having fifteen different pieces of collateral for fifteen different municipalities. So it'll be just one, so, you know, residential solarize branding across the board, make it simple.
I do have one question. Um, you said, uh, about reporting back uh to us.
Right.
You said you were gonna report back by zip code. Um, is that really how you're doing? Cause zip code is not entirely representative of the.
You're absolutely right and the reason we, so uh the data that I use comes from the, my sort of New York Sun program. And they know and report out thirty six pieces of information for each solar system, one of which is zip code, one of which is city, but that's actually the mailing address. So that says Chappaqua, which I happen to know is in Newcastle, but if it didn't, I wouldn't.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And the other which they added more recently is authority having jurisdiction, meaning where they pull the building permit.
Okay.
And it's only by town. Now Newcastle has no villages, so I'll just pull all the data from Newcastle and I'll know that I have everybody in Newcastle. But if, where I live in Croton and Cortland, it only reports Cortland even though I know Croton has a ton of solar systems, cause it only takes forty eight hours to get a permit installed. And, and if I fly five hundred feet above my house, I have thirty percent of the houses in my neighborhood have solar. And I was the installer, but I didn't even install all of them. Somebody else installed too, so, so, um.
Yeah, you have to be careful, cause some Chappaqua addresses are not town of Newcastle. And we also have Austin, um, Yorktown, Mount Kisco, some of the geos, so, yeah.
So it sounds like if you pull.
Right, it's, it's a very complicated, it's a very complicated.
So the building permit.
Overweight. So the authority having jurisdiction is where the solar installer reports they filed the building permit. So I, I can sort by that and if the town has no villages inside of it, then that's a free port for the whole town.
I, I would say that's the best way to do it. Would you say, Rob, the building permit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Stories is, is the best way.
Yeah, so when I reported to you that you had three hundred and twenty eight solar systems, that was for the authority having jurisdiction, the building par- department downstairs.
Yeah. Okay, so.
Whereas downstairs, I can't.
It sounds strange.
That'll, that'll do it. That'll do it.
So I'd be hap- and we're gonna base that on how we're working with our weekly meetings with the installed partners. So we're meeting with them weekly and harvesting the information that we can report back to you. We're not gonna wait till, it, that, when it starts to show up on the nicer, monthly data that they report to the data dot N Y dot com, then I'll know, but I'll know beforehand.
Great.
At least I will attempt to know beforehand and give you some feedback before the end of the year. So it's gonna run for the rest of this year and at the, you know, midfall, we'll evaluate how it's going and 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 expand it or do something, you know, we'll, we'll learn from whatever, whatever the market has told us this year about it and make any adjustments we have to for twenty twenty six and I'll repeat twenty twenty seven, repeat twenty twenty eight and so on.
Okay, well, it's an important program and you're, you're making it easy for residents, yes.
Right, I'll also mention.
And that, that is a great thing.
Great, I'll also mention that it's the experience of the installer partners with whom we met Monday that about fifteen to twenty percent of the folks who ask them for solar systems also ask them to install E V chargers. So that's an easy add-on as it would be if upgrading a service panel for this situation. And about twenty percent of the customers also ask for an energy storage system to provide resilience for their home. So that's something that um is, and I'll, I'll mention that because we, that's true of my experience with my company before I came back to sustain Westchester. About a fifth of the customers wanted energy storage. Some of them, like in my case, I wanted it for my own house because I was, my ninety eight old mother-in-law was living with us. So I had medical reasons to have resilience in the power averages. Um, and uh New York State has just published for effective June of this year an entirely new suite of incentives for residential battery energy storage systems um that will be, I think, pretty financially compelling for homeowners to pursue. So I'll mention. So I'll mention that, I know that you have a current moratorium and I'll be happy to work with your attorney on 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 your views of that.
For commercial, commercial, commercial best systems, not residential, right?
Yeah, large scale.
Okay, um I'll 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 check, I'll check with you, I'll give my card.
For.
Cause we've been tracking this across all the jurisdictions in Westchester County for the last two years. Not that I wanna be an es- expert on that, but I also, I I I spent twelve years sitting on your side of the desk in Croton, so
Okay.
I I vocalize it, nothing new to me, nothing new to me, so.
Good to have a sympathetic uh you're.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Thank you very much, I'll 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 work through Rob and through Kent on the information.
Thank you. Okay, and and thank you, thank you to Kent, Kent, do you wanna come up and say anything, you're always, you know, you know that.
From my email.
Thank you.
Uh, just quickly, Kent Thomas, Coach Arrow, Sustainability Advisory Board. Thank you. Um I just wanna echo what the town board has said, I think it's a a great program. They're doing a great service for the residents or the homeowners in that they're vetting the installers and they're also doing this pre-evaluation where when the the homeowner submits through their website they're gonna do via satellite imagery or plane flyover imagery. Um they'll eliminate the ones that really don't qualify so that it's done right there. And then they're doing a lot more as far as evaluating whether what the production will be like and whether it's worthwhile for them to to go ahead and do this before they pass them on to the installer partners. Um so I think that's wonderful for them and the installer partners already have sort of pre- pre- uh qualified set of homeowners to to work with. So from that standpoint, it's great. And the fact that they've vetted them with the, you know, pricing and quality assurance and and all of those kinds of things is absolutely terrific. Um so um the 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 one that I'm looking forward to find to getting data on satisfaction from from customers and uh me, I I like things as quickly as we the right, this generation, you you wanna see things as soon as possible. So a month is, it's okay, I'll but I'll wait with anticipation to find out, to find out all the data.
Yeah. Okay. It's not a year.
No, 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 I just, yeah, so.
No Instagram.
Right, right.
Right, so uh but I think it's a great program, I think we should, and so the Sustainability Advisory Board is, you know, looking forward to promoting through the newsletter and social media and
So you'll do um uh an S A B, well, you you do tips of the week, but we wanna promote it in a in a in additional way as well, so.
You can promote it, you you can do it, write about it in your newsletter, maybe your section tomorrow or Thursday.
I will, I will, oh, yeah. Yes.
Yeah, okay, sure, fair, yeah.
I intend to do that, but thank you for being here too, Kent, and uh uh we appreciate it.
Okay, sure.
Okay. I neglect, I I neglected, thank you, Kent, I neglected to raise one thing, which um the previous solarized campaigns were initially funded for our work on them
Sure.
with a grant from NYSRDA. But subsequent campaigns were funded through what was called a success fee, which the solar installers paid to sustain Westchester after the projects were completed. And so the what the solar installers call that in a regular business world is a referral fee for a project after it's completed. So our work is being funded by the existing referral fee programs that the solar installers have. So otherwise, I I I can't do any staff resources to it even though we're nonprofit unless I can pay for the staff time. And that's that's how we're gonna re-recover us our 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 costs of of rolling the program out for these people.
Okay.
So it's, we're using the same mechanism.
Thank you for being transparent about that.
Um.
Thank you for being transparent about that.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, it's it's like, so that's what it, it was called a success fee before, but it but it's mechanically the same thing now, so, thank you.
Right, thank you, thanks for being with us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, I just signed off.
You need to it.
That's enthusiasm for you.
Alright, great, I'll, you'll get the first call tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm gonna sign out.
I mean, I've trained three of our staff people, myself and two others to to do the evals, so but we'll, it'll be a race.
Alright.
Alright, good.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, good night.
That was easy, yeah, great program.
Okay, so now we're going to have um a presentation or a discussion about the Upper Minkle Dam. Now, the town has been involved in the decommissioning of this Upper Minkle Dam since I would say twenty fifteen when the D E C started to change the regulations. And we've been coming along, you know, by little dibs and drabs, but the town has been working hard, but it's it's been uh a long process. And um at some point in twenty nineteen, we were awarded a um uh no, sorry, in twenty twenty, we were awarded a FEMA grant under the build building resilient infrastructure and communities program, the BRIC program. We recently learned through a press release uh put out by Governor Kathy Hochul indicating that cuts to the BRIC program would impact several projects in New York State. Um and specifically names the decommissioning of the Upper Minkle Dam in Westchester as one of those projects. So we've done some work to inquire about that. I um I spoke to our U S Congressional office, Mike Lawler's office, I spoke to one of his assistants. I wrote an email and that um was being conveyed to him, so I was promised a call back and that they would they would look into it. We reached out to, or other, um the Office of uh New York Senator Pete Harkum reached out to us, I spoke to Chris Burden about this. And um I know that people are learning about this in in town, so I wanted to to go over what is going on with the Minkle Dam, give an overview of the project so that people understand what this is about. And um Rob, you could explain what you found out about it subsequently. So we are grateful to have Dennis Corelli, the Town Environmental Coordinator here with us and um and Rob too, so you can let me know how you wanna proceed.
Sure, sure.
Dennis, you wanna have a seat over by Lena? Sure. So um I'll give a uh an overview on the project itself and uh and the funding sources uh that exist or or may not exist. Um Dennis is here for the technical support, so this project, the board, Jeremy's been around the entire time. Everybody else has come in since then, but the board will remember and you've heard about Minkle Dam forever. We've been kinda stalled for the last, I don't know, couple of years because this has been uh D E C's reviewing the project and this has recently gone to the Army Corps of Engineers. So I have Dennis to explain all the technical aspects uh that he's more familiar with. But um you know, as as Vicky mentioned, you know, this dates back to two thousand and fifteen where the town um was notified by D E C that they were gonna do reclassification of dams. So at that point in time, we uh the town undertook a feasibility study and we were presented with two different options for the dam. We could either uh we could either upgrade it to the the next class of dam uh under the D E C's classification or we could decommission the dam. Um back at the time, the two projects were very similar in cost. Um and we were hearing information in particular from our insurance broker that we were having a difficult time securing insurers for the town because this dam was classified, uh I think in two thousand and nineteen as a high hazard dam.
I'm gonna interrupt, can you just be clear what that means?
So. No, no, it doesn't, it's not an imminent danger, so a high hazard dam, it's a classification, I think uh D E C goes from A to D. D I think is decommissioned, A is the the um safest. So uh C is termed a high hazard dam and that means if the dam were to fail that um you know, there would be significant impacts to the, I guess, people downstream. What we do to kinda monitor and mitigate that is, Dennis, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Terry, our engineering department goes out there and does a a monthly review. Um I think then we have, that's submitted, I think, to Tectonic and the D E C. And I believe quarterly, Tectonic comes out and does their assessment and then I think annually, the D E C comes out and does an assessment, is that, is that, not exactly?
I I can't recall for the D E C, but the other two are are correct.
Okay, so and I understand all those uh kinda interim or monthly reports are submitted to the D E C. So we're monitoring that on a regular basis, the dam is not in any imminent danger of falling down. But if 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 it were, there would be significant uh implications, so that's why it was deemed a a high hazard. Um so we made the decision back then to uh to decommission it. Um you know, R J at the time had said, you'll have a lot more choices for insurance. So as the board might remember, back in August when we renewed, we had only a single insurer that was willing to insure the town, which is great for our uh our pricing. So we had to go with the insurer that was willing to insure the town. And I think he listed seven or eight other insurers that declined to bid because we had this high hazard dam. Um so as we started to formulate the plan, we're gonna decommission the dam. Uh we began applying for grants, uh among them, we got a five hundred thousand dollar grant from Westchester County. Uh and we got seven hundred and thirty one thousand dollars under the FEMA BRIC program. Uh and that was a a program that is administered in New York State by uh Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Services. So after we were awarded the grant, the town went out for R F P and we retained Tectonic Engineering to do work on the project. They came up with the original plan that I guess was then submitted to the D E C. And I'll let Dennis uh talk about the the details and why it has taken this long and where we are now. Um I will mention as far as the funding, the press release came out from the governor that did state and specifically listed the Minkle Dam as one of the projects defunded. Uh based on the conversations that uh our staff, Miguel in particular, had with Department of Homeland Security, um we've learned that the grant at least through December seventeenth of this year is still in place, the funding is in place. Um unfortunately, because of where we are now, we will probably only be in the design phase at that point, but we'll still be eligible for those expenses to be reimbursed up until that date. There's still an opportunity that we can file an extension that they weren't clear as to whether that would be granted and the funding would still be there after that date. So um we're kinda asking Tectonic to put a rush and I think uh this afternoon, I don't have enough information to pass all that along uh because we just got it late this afternoon and I didn't have a a chance. But Tectonic has presented a couple of different opportunities going forward and I think the board very soon will um will have an opportunity, I think there were three different choices, was that correct, Dennis?
But before we get to Dennis, I just wanna point out that there's some lack of clarity here because your conversation did not indicate that this was clearly being cut.
That's correct.
They were saying that the funding is in place through December thirty one.
Just December seventeenth of this year.
Um. I'm sorry, December seventeenth, um and we don't know beyond that, so.
Right, so we had applied because we were unable to complete the project by uh December seventeenth of twenty four. We applied for and received an extension, which was just normal course uh in a project that has delays. So we received that extension, it's a one-year extension and that's why it goes till December seventeenth of twenty five. We anticipate uh filing another extension uh in hopes that we'll receive the remainder of that fu- funding. Um you know, there's other sources of funding out there as well that we're looking into and hopefully um you know, we'll be able to come up with some other funding. But you know, as to the seven thirty one, we're not certain right now for that sense.
Okay.
So Dennis, maybe you can let us know why this is uh a project we 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 started in two thousand and seventeen and we haven't completed yet.
Sure, so for me coming on in two thousand and nineteen, I I think as far as uh what the the plan was uh from a decommissioning aspect uh which included, um which I'm kinda staring right now at uh from what you got the staff there from Tectonic. It included, obviously, decommissioning would mean that, you know, obviously, the water is going to leave the current configuration in basin and what would we be left behind with? So there needed to be, you know, design considerations for um you know, the the natural stream course would return, that was probably dammed up ninety years ago. Uh but there needed to be a sort of control of that velocity and flow for the the downstream neighbor, so there needed to be engineering with respect to that. Uh I was working with uh Suzette Lopene in Westchester County uh a little bit. Uh she was coming up sort of with the uh restoration design for the areas that would no longer be inundated, you know, what would be wetlands, what would be quasi-wetland, what would be upland? And all of that uh to me was not issue moving along. As I've mentioned to you probably once before, dredging is right. So there's material coming out that, you know, what do you do with it, how do you deal with it? So prior to doing that, you obviously need to do a sampling investigation, which they did. And D E C has uh not identical to the dam, but they have three classifications of material uh with respect to its quality. Um I believe A is unrestricted, you know, beach nourishment, kids, playground. C, you gotta dispose of it. So some of the samples uh came up as B quality materials. So that sort of uh initiated a resampling. So there's obviously a delay in that because you gotta go out and collect more samples, they need to be analyzed by the lab and then you have to evaluate that data. So then came the consideration for, okay, well, we're now uh in a situation here where we're gonna have to start considering disposal of, you know, fifteen hundred, two thousand cubic yards of material that we were thinking, hmm, that would raise the cost. What if we consider interning some of this material on site after the dam's decommissioned? And then, you know, kinda put a clean two-foot cap over it and therefore it would be sequestered and we wouldn't have to worry about, you know, paying for disposal. So a few months ago, when we were at a pre-application uh meeting with just the D E C, we really received no comment on on that proposal. When we sat down, well, not really sat down, I guess it was a conference call, when we had the Corps of Engineers and I looked up the gentleman who was on the call, he had over thirty years of experience. He was not going to allow that because so wetlands and under the clean water, I, the best analogy that I can give, and this is what I explained to Rob. Say you have a water body, a pond, and at one end of the pond, you have really high levels of volume of sediment. It's almost breaching the surface and at the other end of the pond, it's like really deep. So it's like, okay, I just wanna dredge some of this out on the one side and put it on the deeper side of the pond and level it out, you can't do that. For wetlands, once whether you suck it through a hose, take it through a clam shell, that is now your responsibility to not redeposit into a water of the U S or a wetland, you have to go dispose of it upland. So that caught me off guard a little bit and caught Suzette at the county off guard a little bit. She definitely has more uh dam decommissioning experience considering the program that she's in. Because the argument was, well, we're going to the farthest reaches that will now no longer be inundated. And so we didn't consider them to be waters of the U S anymore. And his response was, well, I've seen this before in other projects, you're dealing with sediments that have been underwater for ninety years. They're not necessarily gonna dry out instantaneously and we have seen on other projects that, you know, they still may retain features to allow, albeit a different type of wetland, but for still a wetland to exist. So you would have to prove that through time and doing subsequent delineations to actually show that these areas are not meeting those criteria. But until then, you can't just redeposit this stuff, you know, it and he was sharp enough to say, it sounds like you guys just don't wanna deal with the material and disposing of it. So so that really kind of like arrested everything because it caught all of us off guard and that's why, which is Rob Lutus, who just got today, sort of this reconsideration of of alternatives. Because uh what we had is the preferred alternative is not gonna be the most uh practicable and preferred, you know, according to the to the Corps of Engineers. So that that basically was the biggest break uh uh to this point.
When did that occur, this latest?
Uh that call was probably about three to five months ago, somewhere in there.
Okay.
Well, the cost associated with removing the material is
Significant.
it's a, it's astronomical, we dealt with this with the pond at Getney, it's it's a, it's a fortune.
Getney, mm.
I mean, I'm astounded that, okay, so you know, the dam is classified as a high hazard C-class dam, that's, you know, that's just a fact. And but then they're not really providing any guidance or assistance in in dealing with it. So if they, I suppose they're considering this a local problem entirely.
Right, cause as he said, you know, as long as you don't put it back in wetlands, we're 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 not gonna regulate that. So it was kinda put on us to say, well, you know, you wanna put it in another part of part of Sunny Ridge Preserve, you're free to do so as long as it's not in wetlands. But that, you know, how it, it's not easy to do that.
Now, they're not, they're not considering it contaminated, are they, they're just, it's just not pristine, I don't quite understand.
Um. It it but it 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 is not suitable for unrestricted use.
Which doesn't necessarily mean it's contaminated, it just means it's.
We're right, and it it either needs, it either needs to be um, in our case, it was gonna be interned and capped so that it's not, you know, available at the surface. Or you could, you know, take it off-site and dispose of it either, you know, at a landfill as disposal material or Or sometimes depending on the uh physical characteristics, sometimes landfills will will accept it as, you know, intermediate cover.
How does does it mean that there's uh there's materials such as algae, it's not contaminated, but not something you'd want your kids to be rolling around in?
Right, right, exactly, it's like, you know, it it could be suitable for, say, for example, um. We need to uh level an area that we're going to pave. Pavement obviously is not the cleanest material in the world, you're not gonna eat your dinner off it, so it becomes potentially de minimis what you put under it. Because the pavement technically would be more contaminated, so. So that's why I just, like, again, unrestricted use is, you know, it's 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 usually like uh predominantly sands, you know. Like good for beach nourishment, you know, and things like that, once you start getting some of the silt and 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 clay materials, it's uh. It just, you know, by nature retains some of those uh contaminants and especially in aquatic systems where you have runoff coming from all over the place. And it's you're kinda collecting it, it's almost uh it's almost like a bioconcentration effect minus the bio term.
Dennis, how much, how do you quant- how mu- how much are we talking, are we measuring this in tons and pounds, like how much material is there?
Uh it was cubic yards uh and on these tables, I think we were in the fifteen hundred sixteen. Sixteen hundred range of 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 cubic yards of material, so. It's a few trucks, you know, if you go running it out, you know, you're paying for that uh also.
What's a ballpark? And where do we put it?
In terms of in terms of cost?
Yes.
Uh. I, yeah, I'm 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 hesitant to say, uh but it's it's significant, but as far as where to put it, um. At least in my formal life, you would have to, you know, contact disposal facilities, share your results and, you know, will you accept this material and.
And are you including that in the cost, in the cost that you you don't wanna say?
And the and the. It's yeah, I it there would be.
So there's there's three different proposals right now and and you know, one is restoring the dam to, I guess we we bring it up to an eight.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah, basically just keep it the same.
There was one where we lower the water level and there was one where we take the water out and decommission it altogether. And those costs are unfortunately have escalated tremendously since the original project. Uh and they're all significantly more expensive, we're talking millions more expensive.
What's the range of them?
So it's it's a really rough estimate right now and the rough estimate's around four million dollars.
To to do what?
For the cheapest option?
Uh there's. I I don't know the variations right now, they've given us four million as a as a baseline, um the. I think the terminology is a little bit less uh or most expensive, um we really.
Okay.
Uh until we finalize a plan, they can't really give us a a cost, but.
So what happens, you know, we obviously don't have the money now. We're not certain about the seven hundred and thirty one thousand dollar grant even. So as we wait to get more funding opportunities, what happens if we we just leave this thing alone? What until we have the money for it, what what's going to happen?
So Dennis, can you uh in in your experience, what happens? Is is there a point where D E C says this has gotta come down yesterday, like, or has that already happened? If if we are, if we kinda pause this project while we search for more funding, what are the ramifications of that?
Uh then I guess it would be up to us to find storage for this material, cuz I don't think hard.
Well, I mean, if we're if the dam is still up and we're just and we haven't decided which way to go because we don't have the money for it right now. What what are the, what will D E C do?
Right, I mean, I I I think you're gonna have to get like emergency classification in order to sort of advance um down another pathway.
So D E C is kind of held at bay right now because we're in the process of working on this, so they understand that.
Right, and I right, and this isn't, you know, like in that, you know, you see the cracks forming and the water swelling to your right, you're you're not there.
Right, right.
Again, I mean, the Corps has, you know, emergency procedures as well, but it it doesn't. It doesn't obviate the need to at the end of the day still comply, so even if you're able to ameliorate a situation in hand.
Yep.
They're not gonna, you know, then say, okay, so the sediment that you left in that spot that we said you couldn't leave it and we're gonna give you a break because you were in an emergency. No, at at the end of the day, it's like you still gotta get it out of there at some point, so.
And.
So you don't like circumnavigate those costs necessarily.
What about our insurance risks, which kind of brought us here?
I think. So from what I understand, until the dam is all the way down, it it doesn't alleviate any of the risks for the insurance, um.
So that's gonna stay high and can probably continue to increase?
Will we run the risk of someone not wanting to insure?
That's a good question.
So far, no, uh RJ's done a pretty good job of finding insurers.
Okay.
Um you know, we had some significant increases this year and those were not related to the dam, uh but.
Right.
And we've had, I don't even wanna say it, but so far, um. Uh so I I don't know that that'll be the case, but anytime you don't have competition, they can basically write their price and we have to accept it, so.
Right.
I mean, that's the biggest detriment right now.
And what do we think might be other sources of funding? Uh I mean, are we are we talking sources that we would have to find like, like borrowing? Or are there grants, if grants are drying up, I don't know that that's where we're gonna find more?
Um yeah, I mean, there's still other, yeah, we're gonna we're gonna investigate any grants that are out there. Um I think we were, there's still an opportunity, I think, for additional funding from Westchester County, Dennis, if if I recall. Uh Bob saying that once we get to phase two of this, uh there might be other funds at Westchester County.
I I recall something like that, so yeah, we stole this.
Yeah, so uh and you know, I'll, could we borrow, yes, ultimately our rainy day fund, I mean.
Yeah.
You know, these are some of the reasons why you like to have a rainy day fund, because at some point it may start raining and and we may need to use it, so.
Well, I say that we have to be very aggressive in in looking for alternative grants, specifically at the state and county levels. Where we can, you know, have some le- degree of certainty.
Yeah. Yeah, our ours our staff is very.
And we we just need to do some research, I know that we're very good at that, so.
No. Yeah, and uh in our quarterly meeting with Homeland Security, they recommended specifically one grand that uh.
Let's let's do that. And just to be clear, this is New York State Homeland Security.
Yes, correct, New York State, yep.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. So, yeah, we need to be really aggressive in in pursuing that, so.
Absolutely.
And what is the next decision point, these these three options, like?
So staff is gonna, that we literally got this late this afternoon, uh and uh we're gonna meet with Jeff. Uh Dennis, myself, Bob, probably Bob Sealy if he's around, and and Miguel and just kinda um.
Just so people know, Jeff Gaspar is our new.
Town engineer.
Town engineer.
Yeah, so uh you know, we're gonna take a look at that and get back to Tectonic with any questions and. And I believe invite Tectonic here to explain the options that the town has.
Okay.
Uh periodically, Tectonic has come and presented to the town when they've had updates, um and this is certainly a good time to ask them to come back.
Okay, all right, any any further questions?
No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you Dennis.
Thank you for the damn information. Happy Earth Day Dennis.
Well said, happy Earth Day. Um. Do you wanna stick around for public comment?
I'm sorry?
Do you wanna stick around for public comment, maybe?
Can we get any?
Sure, I'm sorry.
It we're um there are too many people here, but um.
Okay. I'm gonna go back to my chair.
Don't be sorry.
But we are up to the public comment period and I'd like to invite anyone so far who's in the audience for a public comment. And please state your name and uh where you live.
Hello, my name is John Ehrlich and I am privileged to be living in uh the town of Newcastle in Chapewa. Uh it uh it's a quite remarkable place. And what I wanted to comment on today um was because uh. Sorry, Rob, but in in a week, it's gonna be a tough day for a lot of our folks. The uh with the the due date of April thirtieth, I wanted folks to get a sense of how much. Their taxes do cover and how much they they pay. Uh and where it is, now, you know, it's it's Westchester County, so you gotta pay their tax and. And uh the the town of Newcastle. But but that is just seventy percent of what is going to be covered and benefit and will be benefiting. So I just wanted to uh to put it out there of how much good stuff has happened. For example, um in addition to the Westchester County tax and the town Newcastle tax. You got advanced life support partially covered by this. You have Newcastle of fire uh support and help. Uh we're not causing fires, we're just putting them out, but that's uh that's enormously important. Consolidated lighting, little things like that, I mean, it's just a little bit, little bit of money, but it's very, it's very useful. You've got this sawmill sanitation, uh you know, sewer recipient, that's that's large. Um the Newcastle Stanford, uh the Consolidated Water District is 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 a beneficiary also of this payment. That's going next Wednesday or by next Wednesday. Um and the Newca- the Refused Garbage District support. So that is uh. I think enormously important to our lives, beneficial to our lives. And I know it's a painful check to write or however one pays it, but it's it's worthwhile. And all I wanted to do was to cover some some of that because the bill doesn't always. It isn't always clear and just how much and how beneficial this all is, so that was my public comment today. Um also, I'm very glad to be back.
Welcome back, John.
Uh it's my it's my pleasure and and privilege. Uh one gentleman here understands the the uh west coast of of Florida. Um infrastructure and 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 all, but um I am delighted to be here. With the problems of barbarism. Yes, you have uh you have all of these trees, which makes um. It is certain power sources difficult if those that re- rely on the sun. But it is really, really a wonderful place to be. And if you're out of out of the area for a while, really makes it very nice to come back to. Thank you very much, I'm sorry to be going on being too extensive on this.
Thank you, John, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, John.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
Nope.
Okay, anyone online? Okay, so that will end public comment period. Let's see. Rob, do you wanna go over the consent agenda?
Sure. Okay, uh consent agenda items, we have uh adoption of monthly reports, adoption of minutes both for March. Uh the authorization to declare surplus and accept auction results for pickup. Uh the authers authorization to sign and submit documents for the New York State DOT culvert replacement project. The authorization to accept C C S D bid uh for solid waste services for buildings owned by the C C S D in the town of Newcastle. The authorization to establish a capital project for the D P W pile and dump truck. Uh authorization for the purchase of that dump truck, the two thousand twenty five Western Star forty seven X class eight, all season pile and dump truck. Uh an authorization to join the National Purchasing Partners uh Government Association. Uh authorization to use town property for the Into the Light uh ceremony in March. Uh authorization to use town property for Girl Scouts cookie sales. Uh authorization to issue the R F Q for the Chaplain Project. Authorization to uh approve uh C V Act twenty twenty four service credits for the HOSSAP program. Uh resolution for the refund of the Ethical Society of Northern Westchester. Uh resolution for the refund of the Estancia de Pina LLC. And the authorization to settle twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four tax cert proceedings for uh ninety nine trip property LLC.
Okay, thank you, Rob, I just wanna um point out that the authorization to use property for Into the Light, that is um. The Into the Light um. Sunrise Walk sponsored by the Committee on Mental Resilience, Jen is a liaison to that. And the date for that actually is gonna be Sunday, June eighth. I think is the date that they have tentatively set, is that a so- a solid?
I think it's pretty solid and it starts at four in the morning.
Okay. I was going to say that, okay, I jumped on.
Yeah.
Four in the mo- uh four in the morning, but that's going to be June, Sunday, June eighth, four in the morning. Is there anything else that you you might add, that you wanna add at this time about the, just giving advance notice?
Well, it's just uh um a beautiful walk, we did this last year, it wasn't yet a a town committee, um. And it was just so wonderful um to be up that early with other community members um. To support awareness for mental health um and mental wellness. So I would encourage people to try it out this year, it's it's really nice and then, you know, we gather together and um talk about uh mental health issues.
It was such a great response, like it was uh it was done almost at the last minute last year to mirror what's been done in Pleasantville for many years.
Yeah, yeah.
Where they have, you know, hundreds of people who who show up. And uh we had about slightly over a hundred people, which was a wonderful showing. And it really revealed a need for mental health supports and to destigmatize it and to have people come out for awareness and education. So I think it's a it's a great program and I wanna thank the committee for committing to this and actually forming a committee. A town committee to to continue to support it. Okay, um so we have our proposed actions, but I think we went over that. The those will be stated in our resolution, so I don't know that we need to repeat again, so we can start off with our consent agenda.
Alrighty, I can do that. I move to adopt the items one through fifteen as listed on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of seven hundred and ninety two thousand, five hundred and sixty eight dollars and sixty five cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detail voucher detail report, both dated April fourth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Friday, April fourth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I move to retroactively approve the payment of claims in the amount of three hundred eighty four thousand, one hundred and forty four dollars and three cents. Listed on the summary A P check register and detailed voucher detail report, both dated April fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Checks were printed and distributed to each claimant listed on Monday, April fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Mina Nespoli to serve as the recipient of the twenty twenty five Mike Martis summer internship at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant at the rate of sixteen fifty per hour, of which Viola will pay for twenty hours of the forty hour week effective May nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Through August twenty second, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to authorize the hiring of Joseph Blair for the position of student intern at the Millwood Water Treatment Plan at the hourly rate of sixteen fifty per hour. Effective April twenty first, twenty twenty five through July seventh, twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Good.
I move to authorize the hiring of Christopher Perchia for the position of student intern with the Engineering Department for a total stipend amount of two thousand dollars for a period of six weeks effective June second, twenty twenty five.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I move to authorize the appointment of Beth Powell as temporary member of the Board of Assessment Review pursuant to the provisions of Real Property Tax Law five twenty three A for a term of twelve months, effective April eighteenth, twenty twenty five through April seventeenth of twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen, you wanna read the Arbor Day proclamation?
Sure, I move to adopt the following resolution.
Great.
Whereas Arbor Day was first observed in eighteen seventy two with a planting of more than one million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed through the nation and the world. And whereas twenty twenty five is the hundred and fifty third anniversary of National Arbor Day. Whereas trees are a renewable source and help to reduce erosion, moderate temperature, moderate temperature, lower heating and cooling costs, clean the air. And provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees in Newcastle increase property value, enhance the economic vitality of business areas and unify our community. And. Whereas trees wherever they are planted are a source of joy and renewal. Now therefore be a result that the town board in Newcastle proclaims Friday, April twenty fifth, twenty twenty five. As twenty twenty five's Arbor Day in the town of Newcastle. Be it further resolved that the town board urges all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day, to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And to plant and care for trees in. And to plant and care for trees in furtherance of the happiness and well-being of this and future generations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, well, that's a very happy way to end, we have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second. All in favor?